...town meeting tonight, we're going to begin in a few moments, I'll bang the gavel. Before we begin, I'll ask that everybody, if you have a cellphone, if you'd be kind and silence it, or put it on vibrate for the, just in respect to the decorum of our meeting, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay? Terrific. So here we go. Good evening, welcome to the town meeting for the town of Emmitsburg on June 4th, 2018, 7:30 PM is our hoped start time. I'll ask that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, we have a full agenda tonight, I know that we have a large number of people for one specific item, so we're going to try to adjust our agenda listing to accommodate that. The other item is, my understanding is, we have a candidate for public office, as is our tradition, we typically invite them first to come to address the board, and we welcome them to come forward, and please introduce yourself. If you'd come to the dais and let us know your name and your address, and you have a few moments there for yourself-
All right.
-with our timer, four minutes.
Put me on the timer.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to introduce myself, my name is Sabrina Masette, and I am running for Senate, State Senate, in District 4, which, as you know, includes all the small towns, pretty much in Frederick County, around, horseshoes around Frederick City, I have a special affinity for the small towns. I live in Thurmont, I grew up in Thurmont, my kids went to public school there, I went to public school there. At one time a day, my mother was a nurse up here for what was then Dr. Morningstars and Dr. Carroll's office, and of course, we lost both of those fine folks way too early. And basically, I have never run for public office before, but I have a 30-year background in human services, working in the fields of substance abuse, mental health treatment, with people with barriers, again, of substance abuse, homelessness, poverty. I am currently a case manager at the Frederick County Department of Social Services, and I am running to stand up for the small towns in our great state, and I'm running mainly on three things, to protect the supports for working families, working individuals, our seniors, our retirees, I'd like to keep our retirees here in Thurmont, in Emmitsburg, rather than letting them go to other, you know, other states where taxes might be lower, to make sure we have the supports of affordable healthcare, childcare, transportation. I'm running to protect our environment here in Frederick County, our rural landscape in all of Maryland, the natural resources. I'm a proponent of renewable energy sources and managed growth. I served 10 years on the Thurmont Planning and Zoning Commission, so I have a little bit of a clue of what you guys go through. The third reason I'm running is, I'm very concerned about the opioid crisis in our, facing our small towns, and really, all the towns across our country, and I'm really dedicated to helping to ensure that the state takes it seriously, that we find an immediate solution. Our young people are not expendable, and what's happening to them, and their families, and their children, and their spouses, is just a tragedy. So those are the main reasons I'm running. The primary is June 26th, with early voting, June 14th through the 21st, at the Thurmont Library, the Urbana Library, and the Frederick Senior Center, and I do have a website, sabrina masette.com, if you'd like more information. And again, I really thank you for giving me the time to come up here to Emmitsburg, which is my neighbor, so, thanks again.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming in and introducing yourself. Okay, we turn now to our items here. Our next future meetings, we have a town square grand opening event scheduled for Saturday, June 30th, at 9:00 AM. The next town council meeting is scheduled at this time for Monday, July 2nd, 2018. There might be a request coming forward related to modifying that to later in that week because of the July 4th holiday, some people might be on the road, as I understand it. Okay, are there any other meetings to share? Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, we have a Community Heritage Day meeting, the last one for this year, for this year's Community Day, is on June the 18th, at 7 o'clock, at the American Legion.
Okay. All right, very good. Anybody else? No, hearing none, we move forward. We also welcome the Representative County Executive Gardener, Mr. Wilson, thank you. Any comments, were you just visiting to observe this evening, or?
(inaudible).
Just, very good, okay. Well, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Okay. We now turn our attention to the minutes from the May 7th, 2018, meeting and the May 21st meeting. Remember, we had two budget-related discussions. My hope is everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes, and has anybody seen anything they want to see modified, changed, enhanced? No?
I didn't have anything, no.
Okay, very good. Commissioner? No? Okay. With that in mind, why don't we do this in two pieces, so we will take a recommendation for the May 7th first, and the May 21st meeting second? So is there a recommendation to accept the May 7th minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the May 7th minutes as presented.
Very good. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Ritz?
I'll second.
Thank you. The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, 5 to 0. We now turn to the May 21st minutes, meeting minutes for May 21st, 2018. Is there a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for the May 21st town meeting.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Buckman?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, 5 to 0, nobody against. All right, moving forward, we now turn to the deputies' report. Gentlemen, good evening, thank you for being here.
Good evening. Following will be the May stats for the community deputies. We had two thefts, we had three noise complaints, 10 disorderlies, six suspicious activities, one trespass, one assault, one alarm, or, excuse me, 10 alarms, 11 911 hangups, one time we assisted another agency, and three times we assisted the fire department. We had four talks cards, 16 patrol, excuse me, 16 walking patrols, 43 patrol checks, and one bike patrol. Together, we had 41 stops, which resulted in 30 citations, 33 warnings, and zero EROs. We had four traffic complaints, we had four parking complaints, one selective enforcement, and we had eight collisions. Half of those collisions resulted in a, what we call, an acres report, a physical report be written, the other ones were exchange of information. We had three traffic arrests, one criminal arrest, and one criminal summons. The Deputy White House had one traffic arrest, I had two, and Deputy White House had an arrest for the Dollar General, a theft from a Dollar General. The special events that were attended this month, Deputy White House attended the grand opening of the Dog Park and Youthville Fender Program, we both attended the week-long carnival at Mother Seaton School, and the EMS open house. There was a, there was a quest that Deputy White House assists Middletown with a 5K race, which he did. And then, I spoke to the Mother Seaton School on two different occasions, to the 7th grade and 8th graders on one day, and then the 5th and 6th graders on another, about cellphone, cellphone safety, internet safety, and cyber bullying. And Deputy White House, with the assist of other agency, was when he assisted in a missing person in Catoctin, in the Catoctin Park. He also attended the Mount St. Mary graduation, and the Vigilant Hoes Company Spring Fling, and I emptied the drug box. Any questions?
Any questions for the deputy?
No questions, just good seeing you at the carnival, though, both of you, thank you.
I, a lot of pit beef.
Quick questions regarding collisions, do you know offhand if any were related to construction on Main Street?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Terrific, okay. The other, for the disorderly conducts, any further information that could be shared about that, or?
Disorderly conducts can be just someone having, being loud and having a verbal argument, it's nothing-
Terrific.
-nothing out of the ordinary-
Okay.
-nature.
Terrific, thank you, deputy, appreciate you coming in.
And I have noticed that the trucks have slowed down coming through town, so thank you for making contact.
On Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You're welcome.
All right, we now turn to the town manager's report.
Good evening, this is the town manager's report for April of 2018. I'll highlight some of the pertinent areas related to streets. Staff has repaired and replaced several streetlights, as well as repaired and straightened some parking meters and street signs, and staff conducted monthly street sweeping on East and West Main Street, as required by the MS4 permit, we're required to streets sweep monthly, so there'll be notices going up each and every month, to have the cars removed from East and West Main Street. Related to this sidewalk and bridge project, staff assisted with the 10-inch waterline relocation at the Flat Run Bridge Project during the overnight hours on April 29th and April 30th. Related to the parks, staff repaired some leaks in the restroom at Community Park, they cleaned and stocked both restrooms in Memorial and Community Park, they assisted a contractor installing the waterline for the Dog Park, as well as completing the topsoil, seed, and mulch, removed a tree in the area of the new Emmett Gardens Playground, which is slated to begin on July 5th, and they also assisted with the Arbor Day Celebration. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Our water, our water is good still, so we are only having to backwash our roughing filters one time a day, and the DE filters are being done one time per week. Our wake, you can see the well levels, well number three and well number four are currently off, because the water that we are pulling from the lake right now is enough to sustain the levels that we need. You'll see, well number one, we've gained 10 feet, and well number two, we've gained 12 feet. In wastewater, we received about 1.9 inches of precipitation in the month of April, we currently have a 4.86 inch surplus over the last six months, that was in April, I'm sure after the month of May that we've had, that will continue to rise. At the wastewater treatment plant, about, we treated 697,000 gallons per day, and we only consumed 224,812 gallons per day, which means 67.7% of the wastewater treated this month was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage at the plant in April, we did exceed the plant's design capacity five times in the month of April, all related to the high levels of INI that we're currently having. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of June, as you can see there, the top meetings that I had in the month of April. Some noteworthy items, staff repaired another small leak on the track road water line, the LG Sonic was launched into Rainbow Lake, the Route 140 Flat Run Bridge water lines were installed, and work has been completed on the water line as of last week. Pump number two at the pumping station is still not operational, due to the amount of rain we keep receiving, we're unlabelled to have a contractor pump it down to assess the problem, and currently this week, two employees are taking the Class 5A wastewater treatment license class and test at the mount. And that is the highlights of the manager's report.
Do we have any questions for the town manager?
I do not.
Okay, thank you, all right. We now turn to the town planner's report. As the town planner's not here, are there any highlights?
Yeah, I'll highlight some of the things that Ms. Cipperley's been working on, she continues to be the liaison on the sidewalk project, fielding any complaints and concerns, and passing them on to State Highway, and trying to coordinate parking, no parking signs. I will let everybody know, we are having some issues with the contractor sending us timely information, and then changing their schedule, so we do our best to make sure the parking signs are posted at the correct times, and removed when they're not needed, we don't always get the notice. Ms. Cipperley is working with, worked with the town clerk on the community legacy applications for a poolhouse grant, and then the all-accessible playground grant, and she began working on the FY 2019 facade and restoration community legacy grant. She continues works on, working on permits and zoning, she completed the signed permit for the new Seaton Center, she coordinated most of the work on the Dog Park, she worked with SHA to develop a scope of work for traffic impact study on the east side of US 15. Upcoming activity as of May 29th, she needs to complete the final report for the MHAA grant for the square, as we receive invoices from State Highway, and she's arranging a Board of Appeals meeting to undertake reorganization, since there's been new members appointed. And then projects that are upcoming that will review, involve staff review and planning commission, reapproval of the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park 2, the approval lapsed, Brookfield-Irshtown Road approval renewal for that section, and potential commercial development submitted in the next six months or so. And that's basically her highlights.
Okay, and quick question, if the, if the town planner is retiring at the end of this month, is that accurate?
At the end of July.
At the end, very good, okay, all right, I just want to make sure we would-
Yes.
-see her hopefully at the next meeting, is that possible, or?
She should be.
Okay.
We can request that she's here.
That would be great.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Okay, moving forward from there, any questions, remembering this is the manager and not the planner, related to the planner's report?
I have one, I have one question, I think we clarified it before, the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park 2, is that the same thing as the commercial project on the east side of US 15?
No.
No.
We've had several people approach us about any commercial, but we don't have anything concrete out there. This, the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park 2 is Emmitsburg Glass, the land surrounding that. Yeah.
So, we don't have anything slated?
No, no, we've had a few-
A what-if, if what-if something moved in?
Right, we've had a few inquiries, but nothing concrete.
Okay.
Great, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager related to the planner's report? No? Okay, all right. So we now turn to the commissioner's comments. Commissioner Buckman?
The only thing that I have, is someone contacted me regarding the bridge that isn't there, or is decomposing, going from the Emmitsburg Elementary School to the Community Park, and was hoping that we could do something to fix that, so that kids can cross over without an issue, that's all I have.
Commissioner Sweeney mentioned it, I believe, at the last meeting, it is on staff's to-do list, it's just been a very busy time because of the rain, trying to get caught up, so it's on our list.
This is the wooden pedestrian bridge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it's something more permanent, so it doesn't-
I, my understanding, it's not ours, but we're working on it.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Ritz?
Thanks to everyone who put together the pool party this past Saturday, for everyone who showed up, great time, I'm sure it was had by all, I'm still secretly a little disappointed that the mayor and I weren't thrown into the pool. I was expecting it, but, even though I wasn't dressed for the occasion. The second, second comment I have is in relation to, it's actually, there's a gentleman in the audience this evening who is going to be an agenda item, he does have some handouts, should I mention those now, or can he just hand those out when he discusses his agenda item?
All suggests procedurally, when we get to the agenda items, I'll make the recommendation that perhaps we hear from the larger group first, and then from that individual, and then we'll move to the other items, so that way we can have everybody kind of back into the flow of their lives.
Yes, this is the one we're going to move up to.
Right, correct, correct.
Thank you.
All right. So does that take care of your question? Does that answer it?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Very good, okay, all right. Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes, I was also at the pool grand opening, along with the Dog Park and Arbor Day and all of them other ones, we have a lot, this gets coming up, we have one more left, which is the square, on June the 30th. June the 30th is our Community Heritage Day, all are welcome, everything is free for the citizens of Emmitsburg, including the grownups, from ages 0 to 100. But the, the only thing you have to pay for is your food, but the pool will be free, there'll be free entertainment, free rides, free games, it's all old-fashioned stuff, so tug-of-war, and egg pitch, and all that other stuff. Grease pig, so come out and have a good time, that starts at 6 o'clock in the morning on, on June the 30th, with the breakfast at the fire hall. And that's all, you can eat breakfast at our fire hall here, and then we'll be at the new community fire hall building, it'll be in Creamery Road, will be the breakfast.
Oh, really?
So the breakfast will be on Creamery Road?
Pretty sure, we're going to have it down there.
Not on Main Street? Okay.
I'm pretty sure they will. And then, also, I would like to, we have a fishing derby that was canceled last, this past Sunday, two days ago, or yesterday, I'm sorry, yesterday. It was free for the community, for Emmitsburg and Thurmont both, it was a client's pond, that is rescheduled for the 10th, and that's done by the Sons of American Legion. It's all open, free for the kids, kids from ages 3 to 15, and everything's free for them, the fishing, and it's catch and release, and there will be prizes and trophies, and fish, a lot of fishing tackle boxes and fishing poles handed out. So it's all donated by both communities, Emmitsburg and Thurmont both. All the businesses in both communities have donated funds for the last two years, who covered the last two years, we haven't had to get a donation for three years. So this is the third year we've hadn't had to get a donation for the community fishing derby. So come out and do that, that starts at 7 o'clock, this Sunday the 10th, hopefully we won't get any more rain, please no rain.
Uh-huh.
So, come out, enjoy yourself, bring your kids, and your grandkids, it'll be a fun day for both communities. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, sir. Commissioner Blanchard?
Yes, Mr. President, a couple things. For the record, I had to state that I'm going to be absent for the July meeting, I'm going to be at the conference, I know you talked about trying to shift the meeting date, but unfortunately, it's not going to work for me, I'm actually absent that entire week, we're going to be gone.
Okay.
So just for the record. Obviously, attended the pool grand opening on past Saturday, great time, and I talked to my family later in the day, they both, they took the kids, and wife had a good time at the pool. As far as I'm talking to Terry, I think there's a few more garden plots available, so if anyone hasn't gotten their garden in yet, go ahead and get in that, and later this month, the farmers market comes back, sorry, I think June 22nd, I do believe, a Friday, so that's starting back up, and people who have not experienced in the local community, come check it out, lots of local vendors, lots of ways to get those fresh food, starting later this month. So, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Couple items, also attended the pool opening, very well done, town staff, thank you very much, a lot of fun. To our contractor, what a tremendous job they did, and they delivered it on time, that was a win-win for everybody, and I hope we see a lot of people having a lot of fun there. Commissioner Ritz, your comments were great, Commissioner, sorry, Mayor Briggs, yours were good, too. They were good comments, it was a very positive event. Moving to some other stuff, we have two trail volunteer days coming up on the 16th and on the 24th, breakfast will be served early, lunch will be served when the work is done, dress for the work, we'll be clipping back growth on the corridor. I did receive two complaints related to the trails, I heard from a hunter who found bikers out there midday, he was done with his hunting, but he saw them out there and shared with them, and whomever it was, they said, "Well, you'd go talk to Mr. O'Donnell," and I don't know who that is yet, so when I find out, I will have words with them and get them squared away. In response to that, more signs were added at all the trailheads to advise people that the trails were open Sundays only, until the season ended. I don't know if that helped, because shortly after that, on a bike ride, I ran into two gentlemen who are here visiting the Fire Academy, and they had just come from the trails. So, I will advertise over at the academy also, to advise them that the trails are Sundays only, and I'm not sure how they did it, because the bikes they had didn't look quite too sturdy. I also got a second complaint from actually a cyclist who was going by, who saw folks who were unpacking bikes, and their complaint, well, it wasn't a complaint, but they were advising me that this was happening, and they shared with them, the trails were closed, and the people who were about to ride actually moved on, so policing's taking place on both sides, and I'm happy to hear that. The carnival was awesome, I saw the deputies there, that was great, I think everyone had a very nice time. I did receive contact from a small business that is interested in setting up shop in Emmitsburg, and I think it's kind of interesting. When I have more details, and it's very open right now, I will share, but I've also tried to push them toward town staff to talk to the planner and the town manager to find out about their thing, but it was very interesting, so it's positive, people are interested again, or interested more, I should say, in doing business here, and that was kind of good to see. Beyond that, I have no further comments. Yes, sir, Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, I forgot, one more thing.
Sure.
On Community Day, we have a big parade, so if anybody would like to be in the parade, for political reasons, or for, just to want to be in the parade, you can get on, fill an online application out on emmitsburgevents.com, so it's emmitsburgevents.com, and they'll have the applications there for you to fill out for the parade, that way, we know who's all coming for the parade. And that's for floats, or if you're just one of the marching bands or anything, have to fill out majority groups, have to go online and fill out an application. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, we now turn to the mayor, Mr. Mayor, your comment, sir?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir?
Commissioner O'Donnell, first of all, I just want to thank the staff for everything they've done with the Dog Park, the pool, and Arbor Day, I'm sorry, thank you very much. Okay, first of all, I want to thank the staff for everything it did with the Dog Park, the Arbor Day Celebration, and the pool, it's just a fantastic job, everybody jumped on all these things, and very, very special staff, thank you. That was well, it's our town manager, really put a yeoman's effort into the swimming pool, budgeting up, we went from a renovated pool to a new pool, and we probably have a lot of money in there. Baseball, we have 30 young kids from Emmitsburg signed up for the baseball clinic, and please check our website for the days, they're, they're a little nervous about the rain conditions, but I did not bring that tonight, but if you would, it's available, it's going to be a wonderful clinic, and we're really looking for Emmitsburg kids. On the 14th, I met with Mount Chief of Staff Wayne Green, who's here at the clock, went down and looked at the clock that Mount St. Mary's has donated to us, within their inscription on there, and thank you to the mount for everything they do for our town. I went to a county budget meeting at Winchester Hall, visited the Manpower Job Fair at the Seaton Center, toured the new Seaton Center with Sister Martha, and we're talking about a green, green building, it's spectacular, they've, they've come right in line with what we are trying to do with the town, and just a terrific effort, and I'm trying to see if we can get our green team down there, Ms. Shaw, for a tour this Wednesday, and we have our green team meeting that way, that day. Attended the Frederick County, Carroll County Joint Maryland Municipal League meeting in Mount Airy, wonderful dinner, just terrific outing, and I encourage all our commissioners to go next year, it was spectacular, a lot of wonderful people getting together, basically, we donate our service to the town, doesn't, not that maybe you don't want it, but Vigilant Hoes EMS meeting at the Emergency Medical Service meeting, open house, that, over at their Activities Building, went to that, went to the carnival, Mother Seaton Carnival, I've attended the elementary school play day, was over there, met with the pool manager, with Amy or staff, just to go over things before they opened, I also attended the funeral of Dr. Carroll, wonderful doctor we lost here, we lost a family doctor in our town, had been here for 40 years, and the many generations that he served us, and it just means so much that when you lose a person like that. Was there when we opened the pool on Memorial Day, visited the open house at Richmond American Homes, their model home, it's spectacular what they're doing, they built one spec house, and they got their model, it's, that was their open house for tours, they're looking for people to buy houses now, but what a beautiful model out there, it's just spectacular. Attended the Memorial Day service at St. Joseph's Church, and then met with the honor guard from the American Legion and AMVETS, and we toured all the cemeteries, gave a 21-gun salute, and also the doughboy in the American Legion, very moving, they do that on Memorial Day, wonderful, wonderful tradition. National Fire Heritage Center directors telecom, teleconference we have, I'm on the board of the Heritage Center down here at the Fire Museum, and it's a national board, we have, as our chairman is Ron Coleman, and he, he was the fire marshal for California, the state of California, and that is like the seventh largest country in the world, so it's a terrific board of everybody around the country, I'm honored to be on that. Mayor County's executive meeting, that was canceled, Catoctin High graduation at Mount St. Mary's, wonderful ceremony, kudos to the school, and what they've done, and the wonderful kids they're turning out, and the Community Day pool- And the, uh, Community Day Pool, again, uh, with the county executive, uh, Jan Gardner there for the presentation. So kind of her to come up for these things. Um, we have an important meeting on Wednesday. The staff with the State Highway, and, and we got a, we're trying to put a fire into them, what, what's going on there, management of what's going on down there. We're not, we're not pleased with that all. It's cau- causing a lot of inconvenience for, for our businesses down there. And, uh, we may have to change our, um, Dedication Day that was scheduled for June 30th. Um, I will be at the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Ocean City, first part of next week, and I will make, be making a presentation to the, um, all assembled on, uh, Sustainability According to Mark Twain. So, it should be fun, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to that. That's all I've got. Uh, that's all the news. Fifth print, Mr.?
Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Good luck next week. Um, we're gonna turn now to our public comments. We have a lot of people signed up, and I'm gonna ask for some consideration, because we have a number of subjects to discuss. Uh, we have the majority of folks who signed up to discuss relations with students in neighborhoods and the universities. Uh, we have an individual who wants to speak about sidewalks and an individual who wants to speak about pool concessions. Um, and Mr. Slaughter, you have signed up. Uh, we also have you as an agenda item. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just state, you're actually not on the, uh, public comment, and you actually have your own space on the agenda. So, we haven't forgotten you. Okay. So, to that end, um, I would typically take these in sequence for those who've signed up, but with your indulgence, uh, is it okay if we take on one person speaking about sidewalks, one person talking about police, one talking about pool concessions, and then move to the, move the discussion to the mount? Would we have concession from those in attendance who have signed up? Is that reasonable for your needs? Okay, so I will do that then. Um, I will invite at this time Sheila Pittinger from Number Five East Main Street to come to the front of the room, if you'd be so kind. And if you introduce yourself, give us your address again, and you have, uh, your four minutes, and thank you.
Hello. Thank you for agreeing to meet with me this evening. My name is Sheila Pittinger. I own the Total Look up on the square at Five East Main. Um, I have a lot of concerns with this sidewalk issue, because there's still a lot of obstacles for everybody to go around. This has been ongoing since Thanksgiving. I have a lot of older people that has a lot of problems, that they can't get in there. They've, and it hit me at a very busy time, which one of them was Christmas. One of them was Valentine's Day, and then we were trying to make sure that that wasn't gonna happen at Mother's Day, and we still have these issues with the sidewalk. And they're not flat and level, so it really makes it hard for people with walkers, people with wheelchairs, and there's no place for the wheelchairs to come up on the sidewalk safely without being out in traffic. So, that really concerns me, because I have already had two older people fall. And thank God, they did not break anything. So, I am just, you know, wanna make everybody aware how much of a problem that this has caused. And every time you put a thing up saying that there's gonna be no parking, like, I am booked two weeks out, if not more. I can't call my older people and say, "Hey, you can't come in tomorrow, because I wasn't left known until 4:30 the evening before that you are not gonna be able to park here close anywhere." And there's a lot of them that cannot walk that distance. I'm sorry, but they can't. So, I feel like I'm the only one that is concerned about our older group that's here in town. And I just need something to happen so that it makes it easier for them and everyone else. So, that is about, I, that's about all I can think of right now, that...
So, a quick question. Would a curb cut, like, ADA ramp, would that be beneficial? Do you feel like facing a car, if we could talk to the state about that?
Yeah. Yes, because I actually have a lady that has a wheelchair van. And in order for her to be able to access out of her wheelchair van, that ramp has to go completely flat to the surface. She is not able to be, to even pull into either one of those parking lots, parking spaces in front of the shop, because there's not enough room there for her to even get her ramp out and down flat. So, there is initially no way for her to even get out on, with her wheelchair at all. So, there's a major problem there. I don't know what you're gonna do or how we're gonna solve this, but there is a major problem with the handicap part of that.
Terrific. Okay. Um, regarding the timeline, like, we've kind of been at the whim of the vendors and the weather. So, that's sort of one equation, and I know that doesn't answer your, your concerns, but, you know, I, I know you're aware of that. Um, regarding the curb cut, we can ask State Highway to give that consideration. Um, I, I think that might be something that they could comply with regarding the ADA compliance piece. So, hopefully, maybe something can come of that. Again, I can't guarantee anything, but we can certainly try to ask those questions and try to, you know, move forward to accommodate what you're talking about, so. Um, and thank you for coming in. I wish I could give you, like, absolute answers, but I'm just not able to.
Well, and the other, the other issue was, is the planter box that is like, right against the building up there. There's no border in front of that planter box at all. So, if one of their wheelchair wheels would happen to fall off the side of, they're gonna land right in that planter box. There's no...
Well, it's at grade, so there it's...
It's at grade.
It's open and exposed. Okay. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for coming in. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheila.
Returning to town staff.
We have a, we have a meeting with State Highway on Wednesday. I can mention it to them.
Okay, so the concerns, obviously, most immediate is that planter box. Is there, is there a design issue?
That was always on their plans for an at-grade planter right there.
Okay.
So, I can mention it to them.
Sure.
Concerns. Both concerns. Um, that's all I can do.
Sure, sure. Okay.
It's a State Highway project, State Highway mandates, everything, with some town input, so.
And some sort of ADA accessibility?
Was it there before? I, I, I can't remember.
There was...
From the parking spot?
I'm thinking of a plank or some, I, I, I don't know if there was a curb cut there or not before. Actually, did Sheila?
Over here.
I'm sorry. Thanks.
Yes, I, there wasn't any...
Okay.
The way the sidewalk was, it was just...
I'm gonna ask you to come up to the podium again. I'm sorry. And just for the sake of clarity, direct everything to me as you have been, and I'll talk to staff on your behalf.
The way the sidewalk was before, there was actually a place where you could actually get up into there, where you were out of the way, that you weren't in traffic. There wasn't any, there wasn't any thing in the sidewalk, actually, but there was a place for wheelchairs to be able to set that...
Gotcha.
We could actually get them up on there if we had to.
So, with the deeper sidewalk, now, the trade-off is they're exposed to traffic, so that's what the change was?
Correct. And they, there's not enough room for them to come up, if they park down the street. There's no place for them to get onto the sidewalk, because there's not enough room for a wheelchair to come up the sidewalk. Because the light post and the, and next to the house, there's no room for them to get in between both of them.
Terrific. Okay.
I have a question. I mean, um, clarify something for me. We're supposed to be adding three or four parking spaces on the side. Is there a way we could order, I mean, to put, maybe, when you go to the meeting on Wednesday, put a, a handicap van parking space in, in, on the one side of the...
Handicap van takes up two spots. So, if we put one there, that will be both spots. 'Cause if you make one handicap, a handicap van that has to come out, correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have two spots to accommodate the wheelchair coming out.
That's true.
Correct.
I see what you're saying, for the drop-down of the device. Right, right, right. Okay.
Correct.
The best that we can do is talk to State Highway.
Sure. Okay.
You know, this late in their plans, I don't know what they'll do, but, I mean, the mayor's gonna be at the meeting. I'm sure that he'll press for it, too. That's the best that we can do at this point.
So, we have a guarantee there's gonna be the conversation.
Okay.
And we'll follow up one way or another with you and give you advice, follow up with you, give you a summary of what we can provide.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
And are we going to add the at-grade, um, planners on there as well?
In the conversation?
I know that was part of the plan. To me, it just sounds kind of dangerous, though.
Yeah, I, I mean, the plans were reviewed many times. You know, we had public comment. We related to all the plans and the at-grade planners, and, and I guess, you know, comments weren't made at the time, so they went ahead and installed them. I don't know what they can do at this point, but again, I will ask them.
Sure. Okay.
We have, we have a, quite a lengthy list, lengthy punch-out list for them, so.
Great. Okay. Perfect. That's what we can do. Terrific. Okay, moving forward, um, I'm gonna invite now Donald Son regarding deputies. Yes, sir?
Commissioner, Commissioners, Donald Son, Two West Main Street. Um, this is regards to the spring fling. I was wondering if potentially the commissioners, the mayor, someone could speak to Vigilant Fire Hose Company about maybe footing the bill for a few extra deputy, deputies now that we're having a giant beer-drinking party in town. Saturday, there was quite the commotion and lots of drunks wandering around downtown, and seemed like not enough deputies to handle it. I was working all day. Horns were blowing at people walking in the street. I had an incident on my doorstep, someone urinating. Um, yeah, it was fun. So, I was hoping if the commissioners could speak to Vigilant Hose and maybe foot the bill to bring a couple deputies, if we're gonna have it in town, bring a couple extra to patrol during. That was my only thing.
Strong suggestion. We, we will do that for you. Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Okay. We now turn to, uh, Professor Anadale from, regarding the pool concessions.
Hi, I'm Chris Anadale. I live at, uh, 219 West Main Street here in town. And I'm, I'm also the committee chairman for, uh, Troop 727 and PAC 727 Boy Scout units, chartered by St. Joseph Church here in town. Um, I will be very brief. I just wanted to come on behalf of the scouting units and express, uh, my support for any plan that might be coming around to have a concession stand at the pool. Um, so, very personally, as somebody who, uh, spent a lot of time at the pool with my, with my kids, interested in seeing the possibility of some, uh, prepackaged food sales there. And I can, uh, offer in a sort of, um, preliminary way, the support of the scouting units and the possibility of some volunteers to help run it.
I can speak on that.
Commissioner Sweeney?
On behalf of the town staff, we are trying to work on getting on, 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 on getting the concession stand open there. Um, we, um, we offered it to the Boy Scouts through Patrick Joy.
Mm-huh.
I asked him to see if the Boy Scouts would be interested in overseeing it. What it is, is the Community Heritage Day, um, is going to, um, finish putting up what's needed in it. The town has done a lot of work already, but we're gonna finish the ceiling and the, and everything, and fill out the permit for the, um, Health Department. And, um, we are looking for, um, the Boy Scouts to share with the, um, running the concession stand, and we will split the proceeds. We will probably oversee it, but we need somebody to staff it, you know, run it, and we will split the proceeds. That way, you guys don't have to worry about ordering anything. We will take care of getting the food and whatever packaging stuff, refrigerators and stuff. It needs to go there. We have them already, but we need, um, uh, community organization like Boy Scouts to help main, run it, 'cause we don't have enough people in our Community Heritage Day Committee to run that. But we want, we're excited to getting the, the concession stand open to be run for the pool, to make money for, uh, community organizations.
Okay.
This will go towards the Community Day and help the Boy Scouts also.
All right. I'd be happy to talk details with you there. I, I don't, I want to avoid overcommitting, uh, any of the, the particular boys, but I have had a number of expressions of interest in volunteering.
That's, our plan is to open only three, no more than four days a week if, if necessary. Mainly the weekend, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, and maybe a Friday night. Um, according, um, to the Health Department, we do not need, they will, I don't need a, a regular full permit, because we're not selling any hot food. It's all prepackaged food. They've done microwaves and stuff, and, uh, and they won't charge us, because we're a nonprofit organization. So, um, we're working on that now. We're hoping to have it ready for Community Day. So, um, I, I did have an email somebody sent to me from Boy Scouts, but nobody has contacted me yet for that.
I, I can be your contact on that.
Okay, um...
Okay.
I'll give you my email.
Right.
I think it's up there or on the...
I'll make the contact.
Ninety percent Boy Scout, ten percent committee, or just want to make sure we have the right balance there, or? Okay.
We're, we're hoping to, uh, help both organizations and keep the community going and, and keep our, um, Community Day going also, and the Boy Scouts also.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Okay. All right. Um, next, we have Denise Cool, who signed up for ordinances. Does this relate to the mount, or? Okay, very good. So, I'll put you with that category. That's okay? Terrific. All right. So, um, I believe we've addressed everybody, um, non-mount-related discussions and public comment. So, now, Ms. Cool, we turn to you. Uh, if you, uh, join us, identify yourself, please, and your address, and then the floor is yours for your four minutes. And thank you for coming in.
Don't like public speaking. I like to think I was young once and had a good time, and I, I appreciate the kids in the community and, um, wanting to have celebrations and everything, but I, their celebrations in our neighborhood at least are getting a little out of hand. Um, the parties, the music is very loud. They're hooting and hollering in the middle of the streets. Um, when you try and address them and say something to them, they curse at you. The girls run away. Um, one of the mount students actually threatened to beat up my son. I mean, he's an adult, but still, um, I get up at four o'clock in the morning. My son gets up early. My husband gets up early. My daughter is an EMT and firefighter, so she runs 24-hour shifts. She's also coming and going as she's volunteering and everything. So, the parties and then all the loud noises is really interfering, you know, with, with the noise levels. Um, we actually called the police the one night. It was Deputy Sheriff's, not the resident sheriff. Um, he advised my husband that, um, if he continues to call, um, where is it? Sorry. Um, if he, he reports that, that disturbing the peace, um, it would be in his best interest. He was advised that it would not be in his best interest to call anymore, because the students would retaliate against him, his family, or his property. This is what a police officer advised, advised my husband. Um, we, we've seen him go to break up the parties down the street, and when they go up to doors, they ask if any minors are involved. And all the girls and the other kids go running out the back door, through the backyards, up to the other college house or around the neighborhood until the cops are all gone. Um, they're urinating in, in the yards. When we addressed that issue or mentioned it, we were told to get pictures, so by the time you get your phone and get a picture, they're gone. When you yell at them, when they urinate, again, they're cussing at you. You know, mind your own, you know, whatever business. Um, we even saw one get locked out of their house, running around the front porch with nothing on. They thought it was some big joke, and then he's running, scampering around, trying to find some place to get back in the house and going through the backyard and getting in there. Um, they don't put out the trash like they're supposed to and take it back like they're supposed to. It gets left out there for extended periods of time. Uh, they don't remove the snow from the sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot of the indecent exposure, the, um, the trash. It's all ordinances and stuff that the town has the guidelines for. They get parking tickets. In the wintertime, they get parking tickets. And my son overheard them having a conversation out there that they thought was funny. They left them on there, said they were gonna wait for them to fall off, 'cause there was nothing they could do about it. And because their primary residence is out of state, there is nothing we can do about it. They, they just fall off, and then it, it feels like we're, some of the issues has turned into a big joke. It's not being taken seriously. I mean, when I was young, I liked to think I had neighbors and community in mind, and I didn't step on anybody's toes or do anything to hopefully offend anybody. When our kids are growing up, we're told that it's take, it takes a community to raise a child. I think it still continues when they're a young adult. Um, maybe I heard that they have to sign some code of conduct to live off campus. I don't know what that involves, but maybe give them a little brief ordinances of what they're expected for the town, what our guidelines are and everything. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Terrific. Okay.
Commissioner?
Thank you very much.
Did she state her address? I don't know that we have it for the minutes.
Ms. Cool, I'm sorry. Um, I didn't hear you. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, we need it for the minutes.
Seven University.
Number, Number Seven University Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Sorry. I thought, I thought I did hear that. My mistake. Okay. Um, we now turn to, um, Melissa Wetzel, please.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Wetzel, CPA.
Oh, God, I'm gonna get nervous.
Oh God, I'm gonna get nervous.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Could you give us your address?
Okay. I live on 301 West Main Street.
Thanks.
And beside me, I have a closed alley. I've been having problems with the Mount students. I just moved into town last year. And it's usually on the weekends. They get pretty rowdy. And mostly, I guess, about the last six weeks, I've been having problems with them. I got some new plants I put out front and in two days, they had ripped them out of the pots. As you know, the town's redoing the sidewalks and the town didn't put anything in my closed alley. So I put cones there because I caught people driving through the closed alley onto the sidewalk, onto the main street. Three different times, these cones have been stolen. One, one weekend, I realized it happened the night before. So I looked at my cameras and I found a picture of three students. And the one girl just picked up the cone and walked up the street. My neighbors, Paul and Sharon, said that they seen the girl and yelled at her. She ran up into a building. I did call the police and they went up there and checked it out and of course, she didn't live there. They went to the security for the Mount and they said that the girl lived up there. And when, when the police officer went over to the house, the people, the students said that she did not live there, but she did. I mean, we've got to do something about this. We've got to take care of this. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous.
You're doing fine, truly.
But what really hurt me is that some girls came onto my neighbor's property and they were very loud. And I heard them out there saying they had to go to the bathroom. And so I looked out my window. I was sound asleep. They woke me up from, I was sleeping. And when I yelled at them, the girls, they ran. They pulled their pants up and they ran and said, we're gonna go back to the party house, which is across from the laundromat. But the boys, the boys, when I heard them coming up the street and I woke up, I looked out my window and the one, they were so drunk, they were trying to get into a Jeep. And the one boy said, I gotta pee first. And he turned around and he exposed himself and he, and before he started, I said, don't you dare do that. And he said, what are you, the patrol? And I said, well, I guess with students like you, I have to be. And he called me a fucking bitch. And he said I was a fucking pervert.
Ms. Wetzel, I appreciate the, I appreciate the language, but maybe.
I'm just saying what he said.
I understand.
I am a CPA.
Understood, but for the decorum of the meeting, maybe substitute with the understanding that the word is the word.
And he just kept yelling obscenities at me as they got in the Jeep and they drove off. You know? My parents, I was born and raised in this town. I lived outside of town. They called it Wetzelville, which is the mountain beside Mount St. Mary's. My parents raised me that you don't touch other people's property. You don't steal other people's property. You don't go onto others' people's property unless you're invited. And I think we need to do something about this because that is my property and I do maintain that alley. And I would like to put a fence up, have a gate that's open so people can still use the alley. But I have increased my security system. That way, when people walk through that alley, I get a good shot of who they are. Thank you.
Do you have one more sentence to finish it or we can afford you that for a brief moment?
I'm also gonna get a light so that when someone walks in the alley, it comes on.
Okay. Regarding the alley, is there, there's no pylon there marking it as a, just a pedestrian way? It's, it's an open alley, but it doesn't have a, a street cut. There's no apron to 140. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, but you've seen vehicles passing through there still though?
Yeah, I did.
Terrific. Okay.
I did.
Okay. Thank you.
I did call the town and they put cone, they put a big barrels up now.
Okay, so those are in place now?
Yes.
I do have a.
Yes, sir.
And before they, we did the reconstructions, the sidewalks and stuff, there was a tree at the end of the alley.
Right.
So nobody could drive through there before because there was a tree there.
Yeah, that's why I put the cone.
When you put the new concrete sidewalks and they forgot to put the tree.
Okay, but I, I decided I do not want the tree now. I want to put the fence.
Okay, so.
But that's why they couldn't, they couldn't get through before because the tree was there.
Yeah.
Like a poster or something? We'll talk. Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. Hopefully, we can have some resolution. Obviously, you know, we have representatives from the university here.
Well, I thought of something. Can we have a number where we could call the Mount so that you could come out and see my video cameras and see what they have recorded?
Address me and.
I'm sorry.
No, no, we're good. We're good.
It's just he's the man I need to talk to.
Correct. I, I think that's within reason, absolutely.
Yeah.
If I can do something to.
And the police officers are great, but they, they, they can't seem to get anywhere.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. We now turn to Paul McKinley, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting us speak tonight on a very emotional subject.
If you could identify yourself by.
My name is Paul McKinley. I am resident of 227 West Main Street.
Thanks, sir.
I am from a small town, so I understand the plight of small towns. And I know Amisburg is not without their issues and their problems, dealing with drugs and different things that we have in this town. My wife and I bought this property seven years ago. Well, we are raising a family, six children in this home. I am glad to see Mrs. Vice President from the Mount here tonight because this is an issue that I believe that they need to hear and understand and, and take action to resolve. Mainly talking about the, the students from the Mount and they're leasing properties throughout the town, around about us. And every weekend, there's a party going on in these houses, every single one of these houses. From across the street from my residence, from down the street, all around. Every weekend, my wife and I began to call the Sheriff's Department because from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock, they start pouring out of these houses. And one evening, we called the Sheriff's Department, they responded and they went down to the, to the house below and found out from the sheriff deputy that there were over 100 students in this one house that was partying. The thing is, we understand about partying, okay? They're a college. But they are treating Amisburg like a frat house and frat row. They are pouring out of these houses, screaming, fighting, girls are crying. Every single weekend, every single night, they're, they're, they wake my children up. One of my, my teenage daughters, she's on the lower level on Main Street. And they're, they, they care nothing about the ordinance. They care nothing about decency. Ms. Wetzel is my neighbor and she was talking about my residence across from hers. The alley separates us. One evening at 11 o'clock, I was sitting in the front room and I watched the three gentlemen come out of the house and get in their cars and I was listening to them talking on the summer night. And they said they had to urinate or politely said. So one gets out behind the car on the street, starts peeing on, on, on the road. The other one comes over to my property and starts peeing on my tree. So in midstream, I go out there and confront them and had some choice words for them. Ms. Wetzel caught young ladies squatting between my two air conditioners. The gentlemen that she yelled at were urinating on my house. Okay, so we have an issue here in Amisburg. Okay, and it, it goes on every single weekend throughout the, the winter months. And something needs to be done. We love this town. We, we, we came here seven years ago, you know, bought this house and settled down to raise our children. And, and we still love this town. But there's a definite issue going on here that, that needs to be addressed. And I know the Sheriff's Department, you know, they're doing a great job, but they are stretched thin. You know, there's no permanent presence of police here in Amisburg. You know, sometimes when you call them, their response time is, takes a little longer than other times depending where they are. The best that they can do is go in, address or break up the party. I, I understand that there was some talk about issuing citations to the land landlords of the property owners. I think the Mount needs to be addressed. I know, I know we are in partnership as a town and Mount St. Mary's. And, and I hope that mutual partnership continues. But there's an issue that they need to, they need to address because this is our town. And it is their students that are coming into our town and like I said, treating it like a frat house. And it's an embarrassment and it should be an embarrassment to the Mount. This is a, this is a Catholic college, you know, one of the oldest ones in the country. And they should be embarrassed that their students, many of them are, you know, one of them was a lacrosse team that was across the street. So many of them who are representing this college is, excuse my words, but pissing all over this town. And it, it needs to be addressed. Seriously, needs to be addressed.
Mr. McKinley, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Thanks for coming in. Okay. At this time, we turn to TJ Burns.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, my name is TJ Burns. I live at 321 Mount Nearest Way. As, I've been living in town now for 18 years, going on 19 years. I was a four-year student at Mount St. Mary's. So my time as a resident has far outweighed any time I had at Mount St. Mary's. So I consider myself a resident, alumni, a business owner, and a family person of this town. I'm married into a family who is a permanent fixture in this town. I'm not going anywhere for a long time to come. While I'm not gonna deny that there are some issues with some of these students, there are several students who are very good in this town. I own a house that has Mount students in it, that have gone out of their way to make sure driveways are shoveled, to help their neighbors when they needed to move, to make sure things are done in town. I know several other houses who have done the exact same thing. So to generalize this as a Mount issue and to say that some of us who are Mount alumni or own Mount houses, that this is our issue, I think is a far overreach and far overestimation of what is really going on. I'm not gonna deny that there are kids that are problems. We know this. We see it. But to say that every town, house in this town is an issue is way off the bat. I've had a house for four years. I've never had one single party there. I've never had one single complaint there. And now I can't get residents because there's been so many complaints and so many kids are now worried about, okay, maybe we can't live in town. Maybe we can't do this. I've never had an issue with my rent being paid on time. I've never had any issues with anything and now I'm struggling to find tenants right now because of some of these issues that are being created by somebody else. And because of the complaints on different social media and different things of that nature that students are now seeing. So to generalize this and say this is a huge Mount problem, it's a problem across the nation. I can take you to any town in America right now. Westchester PA with Westchester University. Go down to Catholic University. Go to Temple University. Let's go into Westminster with McDaniel College. Hood College. You can go to anywhere and this is a problem across the board at all of these different universities. So to try to, you know, create issues and create town ordinances and all these things, there needs to be a dialogue with the Mount and the fact that the Vice President is here and the President has been involved and coming into town and talking to people is a huge step in that direction. But to keep generalizing and throwing people under the bus and, you know, talking out loud behind people's backs and not inviting the students in to have these discussions is a broad overstep of what should be done. We can have these conversations with these kids. These are 18, 19, 20, 20-year-old kids that are voting citizens in this, in this community and could be voting citizens in this town very quickly. They have residency for many of these kids if they have jobs and do anything in this area. So to generalize and say this, these issues, we have to be very, very careful on how we handle this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Okay. Thank you for coming in. All right. We now turn to Angie Smith, please.
Hello. My name's Angie Smith. I live at 110 South Eaton Avenue in Amisburg. I've lived in Amisburg my entire life. I've had the same job for almost 30 years. And the problems with what I've experienced started the very first week the kids were in school. They had a huge party at the residence behind my house and they broke down my fence. And they've continued to have parties and break down my fence. They come in my yard and they urinate. They throw trash. I've found condoms. I've found tampons, broken glass. Actually, Commissioner Buckman came home one night and found them in my yard peeing and they cursed at her. So she came in the house and got my husband and I. Now my husband's been accused of grabbing a hold of one of them and choking him and throwing him around and none of us left our yard until the police came. We had the police come. A lot of police came because it was a huge party. And I think my fence has been broken down at least four times now. My husband keeps putting it back up. I just, I don't know what to do anymore. I just want him to stay out of my yard and quit breaking my fence. He even accused us of making up a fake bill with the fence company so that we can get the money for, instead of just repairing what they did. I just don't know what to do. I'm not gonna leave. I've lived in Amisburg my whole life. I'll be here till I die. I just want him to stay out of my yard and quit throwing the trash in my yard. And that's really all I have to say. But it is Mount students.
Sure, sure. Okay. Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate you sharing your information. Okay, we now invite Mr. Wayne Green.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. I'm Wayne Green, Vice President and Chief of Staff, Mount St. Mary's University. And let me, let me start off by saying to Melissa, Angie, Ms. Buckman as well, I understand you have, have been witness potentially to this. Ms. Cool and Paul. I will, I will say that, I mean, clearly some things have happened over a period of time, some recently, some not so recently, apparently. All those facts is, well, we'll get to the bottom of the facts. We don't have many of those. Some of that's on social media, but let me, let me say first, it is embarrassing. And the, what you described is unacceptable behavior. It is particularly unacceptable for the high standards that Mounties hold themselves to. And I'll align myself as well with Mr. Burns's comments to say that we, we've all known Mounties, I for only a short period of time, but I, I can tell you that the vast majority of them are great people who value service and do value the community. But there's the old adage that the actions of a few, it only takes the actions of a few to spoil the reputation of the many. And because we at the Mount care about every single student, all of them, the, the behavior, even just a few and their development is important to us. And for even this, this few to act the way they are, even though, you know, there's, there's a big party, you know, a hundred people, this is the actions of, of a handful dozen. May, maybe not that many. But we've got to get to the bottom of who they are, where they are. And, and then this is part of their development too. Because we care about every single one of them. And when we we, we've got to improve how we communicate with each other. Much of what I heard today is the first time I've heard this, even though social, the social media in the recent weeks has helped chronicle some of it. When we review our records, the connection between what's actually reported, the biggest incident was last August. That was where, where it really started, I think with Angie, was last August. Our Vice President responded to that, Mr. Post. And then I come to find out, even though our, the report came back to us that the fence was fixed, we saw the price on the fence, the dean's students saw the price. We never got the feedback that that was complete and apparently it was never officially resolved. And so there's a gap in, in our information sharing with each other and, and we've got to fix that. So on, on behalf of the Mount. So on, on behalf of the Mount, I, I'm sorry to all of you that you had to put up with that. And what I invite you to do, uh, I've, I've got two or three cards left. I'd, I'd like to sit down with, with each of you together in a more detailed way. I know we've spoken on the phone a little bit, um, and learn more. Uh, the, the dean of students has some innovative ideas about how we can understand where our Mount students are living. Maybe do a, a welcome to the, to Emmitsburg, uh, opening in August in particular. And, and, um, I'll speak for, for Ken, you know, some of these ideas are, may I continue?
Please do.
Thanks. Some of these ideas are, you know, when we, when our new class comes in in August, we need to, to sit down with them and describe to them, you know, when, when you, after the fact, in this particular case, Angie, when you sit down and you describe, do you know there's a family that lives there? Do you know there's young children in the neighborhood? Do you know there's, there are people that wake up at 4:00 AM in the morning and make a living? And then they are, uh, in, in almost every case, in this particular case, they are horrified by it. And they realize, they can see themselves then in a way that they didn't see themselves the night before or the week before. Um, and so more of that interaction has to occur. Because then, I won't say that they all will learn their lesson that first time, but when Vice President Post sits down with you, Dean of Students Ken McVary sits down with you, this was about September 1st, uh, they got the message loud and clear, and many of them are, they're ashamed of it. That didn't mean that one or two of them maybe did it again, don't know. Uh, but I would say the vast majority of that particular group, uh, per our records did. And they were, they were ashamed of it, and that's part of their development and what we're all about. These instances that you've reported are not what we're about. It's not what they're about, and it's not what the 210-year history of the Mount with this historic town is about. So what I would like to do, uh, if you would, uh, accept my offer to meet together or individually or however, because I, I, I understand more now, having heard you each at the podium. I didn't understand by reading the social media and by reviewing really what were just a few instances that were a matter of our record, either from the Frederick Deputy or through our public safety, very, very little of what you are describing is actually a matter of the record. So opening the lines of communication, I think, is the key to our victory. Uh, that you have a direct line to call into the dean of students in particular. If, if you continue to see behavior as it's occurring in real time, calling into our public safety or calling me, um, and, and working in, uh, that, that, that's what, what I'd offer and, uh, I will, uh, offer the balance of any time I might have or questions for everybody else.
Ms. Buckman.
I'd just like to create some balance here. Yes, there is a problem, but there's also, like you said, a group of students that does community service, and I work with, Seton Center with these students, and they do tremendous outreach in our community. We know it's not all of them. It's the same handful over and over again. We know that. We love the Mount.
The Mount. Mr. Swinney, yes, sir.
Does the Mount know where every single one of their students live?
We will this coming year.
You will this coming year?
Well, so it's one of the things that, uh, Dean McVary, uh, put together is that we, so every single address and how many people are in it, I, I would say, um, we hadn't had a record of, and, and that'll all change in August. So of course the.
Did they all get a copy of this?
They're all beholden to that.
Okay, they're all beholden, do they have to sign it or anything? Um, because they're scattered all through the town, it's not just one part of the town, it's, the students live in the whole town.
Mr. Swinney, I want to invite Mr. McVary up. Mr. McVary, if you would share your identity and your.
Sure, uh, Ken McVary, Dean of Students. So I write that, I edit that every year, so that's.
Um, I, I've seen it too, but I've seen the good ones too. So I, I know, you know, I've seen parties that we had at, at, at the houses where they don't do anything but stay in their yard and play cornhole and, and doesn't bother anybody, they're neighbors of mine. But the, um, I've seen them also being also. But they're not just in, they're, they're in Main Street, they're in Sallow Hill, they're in, um, Pembroke or Brookfield, I'm sorry, Brookfield.
They're in every neighborhood in our community.
Yeah, they're almost in every neighborhood.
No, they are.
Emmergards. Yeah, and it's, it's just not one, and then when you have a big party here, and he said there was a hundred people at that one party, and they're all 17, 18, 19-year-old, 20-years-old, they should be drinking anyway. I mean, I know we've all done it, but they shouldn't be drinking, especially a hundred of them there. But, uh, it'd be nice if it's just, if we're going to do it this year, that you're going to know where every single one of the, that way you know.
I can promise you, we will know where every single one, but we will know a much higher percentage than we have in the past. Anything that has, has protocols or procedures put in place, anyone that doesn't want to be beholden to them finds new and creative ways to get around these things. And so we've had more successful processes in the past, and it's a matter of revamping them in a way that, that gets our students today back on our radar of knowing where people live. And, and so, uh, our failsafe before was to have every student register their car as commuters so they would park in certain places. A, they didn't want us to know necessarily where they lived off-campus, and B, uh, they didn't want to get parking tickets, uh, you know, necessarily associated with their, their car. So some of them started stop, just started to stop registering their cars. Uh, I believe we have a, a realistic plan in place to get a much higher capture of that, so that when, and, and, you know, a couple of people are right, it, it's very much about the communication flow. If I get a report in a timely manner, I can act on that. When I find out about something, when it's hit a boiling point, three months after, it's hard for me to act on, on a, a culmination of events that, that at that point almost becomes sort of, sort of hearsay. But I can't, I can't start digging into something with, with our public safety's help or investigators' helps to start figuring out who did what. Many of these students that are actually the, the occupants of the houses are not, they don't tend to be the, the ones causing the problems, it's their guests. Now, keep in mind, I know that these people are responsible because they're housing or, or having these people over. But when we end up finding about something in a timely way and with a credible source that we can then invite the residents of that house that were, were most recently, um, you know, represented some type of egregious behavior, I can sit down with those people and, and have an adult conversation with them where they, they tend to realize pretty quickly, um, how bad it's gotten. And there's, and many situations where that actually has paid dividends, where they've come back and been like, thanks for treating us like an adult, thanks not for yelling at us. We went back and we talked to our neighbor, we worked it out, now we shovel their driveway, you know, and, and now we tell them, they just want to know if we're going to have people over, and, you know, so we try and give them a heads up. So that, that ends up being this sort of balance. If, if we're looking for perfection, I don't think we're ever going to have that. Um, if we're looking to progress, I think that's absolutely reasonable, and it's something that we want to be a part of. It does take a village, I forget who said it earlier. Um, but that involves all of us, necessitates all of us to basically start interacting. Um, and thinking about these things, what these students don't realize more often than not, uh, my experience tells me that they are, they go into these houses thinking they are the first person to has moved, who's lived there. They don't realize that another group of students necessarily lived in that same place and that they are basically inheriting the sins of other people's past. So their one party ends up sort of stacking up from years of frustration. And I've watched these sort of ebbs and flows with the town where some years are bad years, some years are good years. The years that are better years are the years that we're able to keep these dialogues open. And, and the year, and, and the times that the residents are, are communicating with us, they're communicating with their neighbors, the neighbors are communicating with us, and we, and, and we're also now communicating with the sheriff's deputies, um, as well. So we kind of create this nice little quadrangle, when it's working well, um, to, to triage these situations.
When, when, so when they register, do they have to put down their address where they are living?
Yes, they live, they, they show where they are living.
Actually, where they're living at?
Yes.
Okay, because if we're going to go, um, only other thing I would like to know, Kathy's put on, maybe we can get on our T, uh, Channel 99. Is your telephone number, contact number.
Absolutely.
Maybe his. Also, and, and, and anybody else's that needs to be called for a residence note can call them directly and not wait three months later.
And when I talked to you earlier, saying, well, when someone's, you, you know, peeing in your yard and you, you can't get your camera there quick enough, then who do we call? We can't call the police. And you said, we just need to know what house it came from. So if, if that's happening, you, you know where the party is, that's what you tell them.
I'm going to disagree with that, though.
That's what he said.
I, but, but here's where I disagree. The piece is, um, there's a process. And I think everybody's on the same page that we are a community. You know, we, it's like a family, you know? Uh, you can't pick your family, but you still have family, right? Okay. So the premise is, you know, we are the Mount, we are the university, we are FEMA, we are the town, and, and there it is. The premise I'm going with is this, if there's an issue, if it's a public safety issue or a public health issue, dial 911 first. Make that call. And if you are not satisfied with the police response, contact us and we will advocate for you to the sheriff's office and, and we will, we will chase it to the highest level. I mean, literally up to Sheriff Jenkins if there's a need, or MS, Maryland State Police if there's a need. I mean, we, we will do that to advocate for our community. That's an absolute promise and guarantee. The next piece, if we create that, that chain, okay? Um, it, it creates a very clear line of issues where there's, you know, a pattern of, of inappropriate behavior, it's documented. Now, the next piece is, once we have that documentation, the university, I'm going to assume, once that's, you know, there's a hard copy of evidence there, that gives them something that's actionable. They can actually move on it in a timely way, and they can make that young person accountable potentially for their behavior. Or if it's not that young person, it's the resident of that property. And that way, they're, bless you, that way they're held accountable, okay? Yes, sir.
I don't think, I, I disagree. Because I don't think we should call the police for just, you know, having a party or.
Oh, I.
Somebody's not even drinking there, or maybe the person who, I, I think the, the Mount should be the primary contact because it's their students.
Well, here's the thing, I can't judge whether a 21-year-old is the person drinking the alcohol.
Right.
I can't judge if the person is sober or, or not if they're urinating in public, but I have a theory about it.
And we cannot, we cannot respond in the, on a Friday night from a resident.
But you can document where that is and where, who lives there.
But, but we can take it after the fact and address it. So for me, it's a matter of, of identifying the hotspots.
Because if we give them the tool, they can act with, that, that tool becomes a hammer to benefit all of us, including that young person who needs to see that they've hit a boundary.
However.
Yes, sir.
If, if the police are called and the police show up and it's like, hey, guys, just keep it down, we've heard some complaints. There's no record.
No.
And that's what happens.
There's no, unless I'm incorrect, we might have to pull one of the deputies up here, but if there's no police report filed, then there's no record.
Okay, and, and that's a case where we can talk to town leadership, the mayor, the board, uh, to basically give direction if best, you know, in, in best circumstances to those who enforce the law and say, we want to, we want a, a lesser tolerance. Now, our officers are empowered to use their best judgment, and, and, and that's something we respect, but let me, let me finish. But the, the premise is, if we lack the documentation, the university has less authority on the issue, that's part one. And therefore, we will continue getting what we've been getting on the negative side. Now, on the positive side, I don't want to, I don't want to be Pollyanna here, but I've been very impressed in, in a lot of ways by the majority of students who I've met who've been in town. And, you know, I'm the guy who gets into every neighborhood at every snowstorm, you know, to make sure that the plows are there, you know, in, in the first hour or so, or the first few hours. And I'll see the kids goofing around from the university, and I'll say, can you guys do yourselves a favor and shovel some driveways? And I'll come back to that neighborhood, and I will see them honest to goodness clearing driveways. And, and, you know, that's, that's the, a great PR piece, but the reality is, you know, it's, it's manpower applied and there's a positive result. And I think that speaks to the character generally of them. But speaking to another issue, kind of trying to wrap this up on, on this end. I feel what a lot of these young people don't understand is, is town living. They don't get the idea that people work here and live here. And that's, that's something new to them because their experience was an urban one potentially or a suburban one. So this is like landing on a free, on, on, on a totally different planet. So their concept of what propriety is, they know it, they know right from wrong, but, you know, they're on a longer leash and, and they're going to test their boundaries potentially. That's not a fair statement. They're, they have more freedom, I'll say, and they have more choices, and they don't always make the best choices. Leash is a little bit too harsh. So if, if the young people there at the university are presented with what town living is about, you know, it's good that we have all this leadership talk, and this is super important, it's profoundly important. But for the boots-on-the-ground piece, when we get the young people, there has to be some means by which they understand that they're coming to a new planet, and there's a different level of accountability. And if they understand what town living really is by being on the main street and seeing the shop owner and suddenly realizing, oh, shop owner A is living in apartment B. You know, uh, I think that they, they will have success connecting those dots.
It is clear that this has escalated a little bit this past year, more than in previous years.
Correct.
Um, it is also clear that I have not actually heard as much as I have had in previous years either. Else we could have actually probably addressed some of these things. Hearing these things now, and, and you have no idea, Wayne is correct about how much it means to hear the personal aspects of this, um, and the detailed thing, other than just students were acting a fool.